...the regular meeting, December 7th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority. And we will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original habitats who have occupied, maintained and secured this place, who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening. We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by our fire chief, Steve Benz. Please come up to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Benz. Noted on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under item one, but it provides an opportunity, an important opportunity for the public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or speak on any other item this evening, please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. In front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak, to be heard. We heard, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read and the council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept any further speaking request on that particular agenda item. If you're addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct, posted the request to speak cards and on the podium and not speak out loud, threatening offensive, abusive or other disrespectful language that disturbs, disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, first we have Chris Acosta.
So I just wanted to bring up, I live in the Bridgeway Lakes Two area, and I wanted to bring up the, I guess I could just generally say just bad driving. It's about as bad as I've ever seen it the last two years. We have people chronically running stop signs. It happens all the time, I'm out and about running. I'm thinking of some things I've seen. I saw a guy next to the gym where I work on Terminal Street spinning donuts for five minutes straight, like actual five minutes in broad daylight, shut down, traffic going in each way. You know, I don't know what's going on. It wasn't like this two years ago. I've been in West Sacramento since 2009, and I feel like only lately have people just begun to just be hyper aggressive and just not take accountability. And I don't know what it is, just a general impatience. What compelled me to come in here was, I was out running the other day. I had a guy come by me on Otis Avenue, probably doing 90 miles an hour, easily. And I thought, you know, wow, you know, a couple of days later, the same thing, when I waved to him to stop, he came to a screeching halt in the car, came out and started screaming, and I thought, wow, I'm not the one that's provoking this stuff. And I was kind of scared. I thought, this guy gonna do something, act out, I don't know. But what I'm wondering is, I don't see a lot of police. I feel like there hasn't really been like a police presence. I think the last time I saw an officer out there at a stop sign was October. So it's been a while. And the only time I've seen officers out recently has been to respond to calls. We had that hostage situation, this and that, the other night. But I don't see them out, and I just don't trust people that can govern their, govern their own actions. I think there has to be something, something to move on that. If not a police presence, I've looked at what other states are doing, and I've seen some of them putting camera traps, you know, like they put on the stoplights, but putting them on stop signs, which I know some people might think that's a violation of rights, but I don't. At this point, I think there's something that needs to be done quickly. I just think it's a big threat in the community, especially when you have joggers or people out walking their dogs, you've got preschoolers taking their kids out on nature walks, and this is happening. So I just wanted to bring that up. What I'm gonna do, which time I got here, is I would, I'm gonna position a camera at one particular stop sign, just so you can get an idea. And I swear, I've been by there going back and forth, and I'll see four or five people just go right through the stop sign. And these aren't car racer people, I know some people, we have that, that culture going on. These are like adults, and I feel like they're doing this stuff, how can we expect the kids not to? They're just, they're setting just a bad example. So I'll bring that to the next meeting. I haven't had time, I kind of do this together very quickly, but I want to bring that up next time, just so you guys can have an idea of what we're dealing with. I can probably send it to you via email, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
That is it, okay.
On October 4th, around 6:00 PM, my daughter was hit by a car on the crosswalk by Southport and Marshall. And thank God she didn't get any broken bones. She got, she just had some bruises, but I just feel that there needs to be a traffic light in that section because it is across from the park. And anywhere around the park, you know, kids are obviously walking to the park or from the park or back home. The stop sign is not enough. And the person who hit my daughter was a teenager, and we didn't get a license plate number, so he got away with it. So I feel like he will get, do it again because he got away with it. And so I just think my daughter's alive, and I hope it doesn't happen to any other child. I've seen kids walk, walking on, just on the side of Southport, like a 10-year-old and a seven-year-old brother, her brother, she was driving, they were riding bikes. And I was like, the cars are driving so fast on Southport that if that car just swerves and hits that poor little child, the mom's not there, nobody was there. So I just feel Southport is, it needs either more traffic lights or cameras for people to get caught because they're just speeding so much. Marshall's also another concern for me because people are just jogging or taking their daily walks, and people are just driving so fast. And I've noticed that Otis also, the new, I guess new houses are being built there also. I don't know if speed bumps will help people to slow down because I've seen elderly people walking down Otis too, but I just feel like speeding is an issue now. I don't know, I've lived here for the past eight years in Southport, and I think it's a beautiful city. And I just think if we put more traffic lights or cameras or speed bumps, I think if there's no policing, at least we can do this much, you know. And I have never seen a police in the drive-by Southport or Marshall or Otis. So I just feel, I'm talking, I came here to speak on behalf of all the little kids that might potentially get hurt, and people, you know, get away with it, they'll do it again. And also, the same as he said, I hear at night, I don't know if it's on Southport or Marshall, where exactly, but I hear what they call them, donuts. I hear people racing at night. So I just feel like that's wrong, at least, you know, they should, they should have a place for that, to do that. And just, Southport, Bridgeway Lakes is like a small community, or, you know, and it's, there's kids, and so I just feel like I needed to speak up for the kids, and that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Maria Garcia.
Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar. Ahorita que estaba hablando la señora acerca de eso, no solamente en el área del Southport pasa eso, también en el área de nosotros de este lado. Y otra de las cosas que sería muy buena idea si la ciudad quiere ganar dinero, porque no hacer un lugar donde esos muchachos puedan estar haciéndolo en un lugar seguro con ambulancia y todo lo que necesiten para poder hacer, practicar todos esos trucos que quieren hacer en los carros. Pero un lugar seguro para ellos y no que anden alrededor en las calles. El otro tema que quería hablar es acerca del puente. El puente que van a ser, y que sí realmente yo no creo que sea necesario que sea el nombre del antiguo alcalde, que lleve el nombre del antiguo alcalde. Me gustaría que como dijo en otra de las ocasiones alguien, ¿por qué no ponerle el nombre de una persona, algún santo, algún otro tipo de persona diferente? ¿Por qué tiene que ser el nombre del alcalde? Ese es el tema también. Gracias.
Rhonda Pope Flores.
First off, I'd like to congratulate you on your, well, you re-elected and you becoming on council. So congratulations. You'll see me a lot. You guys, they know me very well. I call, I want to bring to your attention and everyone else that on November 18th, we did file a Brown Act violation letter regarding the action that took place in October regarding the very elusive description on the agenda item. I also want to bring to your attention that I noticed on the council agenda, it continues to be here, future agenda items requested by council. Now, what happened in October was it said future agenda item, but then it was discussed, it was voted on, and then in the next meeting, without any opportunity for the public to have input, you decided to rename the street, not bridge, I keep saying bridge, the street, which is a very iconic bridge and has much, you know, importance to many of the community members. I also followed up with Yochadihy to find out if Yochadihy was contacted, because they are tribe in Yolo County. They were not contacted. And to do a land acknowledgement, acknowledging your native people and not notifying your local tribal representatives is just shameful. So I want to bring that to your attention. I, I just want to address one more thing. In the last meeting when I spoke, I was accused of being divisive. I represent Broderick and Brighton Neighborhood Association. You may not like what I have to say, but I represent our community, and I have people contact me all the time asking, can you address this? Can you talk about that? So I'm not here speaking on my own behalf. I'm speaking on many of the community members on the north side. You will all, you all have your own districts, but at the end of the day, you're gonna vote. That will affect all of us, and especially on the north side, which is why we organized, because we don't have, we're not getting the things that we need. There's many things in the Broderick and Brighton area that is needed, and we never see it. There's some efforts being made, but I'm not gonna pat anybody on the back because they took, you know, money that should have been being paid a long time ago to fix Bright Park. This is ridiculous. And I know that there are movements being made, I want to thank Tracy, I know she's in the audience. And to show you that I'm committed, I have leveraged my own tribal resources. We donated $175,000 additionally because we believe in this park and we want to see it happen. So I just urge you to please put your attention to Bright Park. Thank you.
Robin Davis.
Hello, I'm Robin, and I live in a 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. Since October of 2020, I've asked the city to be the leader in the tiny home movement and help with legalizing my tiny home affordably. Since October of 2020, roughly 16 cities and counties in California have implemented tiny home policies, including Oakland, Placer, Mendocino and Santa Cruz, which have specifically incorporated movable tiny homes as primary residences. This means my situation is legal and becoming legal all over this state. Local governments realize tiny homes create a way to get affordable housing to its residents faster than they can build it. Tiny homes are not just a trend, but a lifestyle and a lifeline for people struggling to house themselves all over the state. In my recent meeting with the departments, I was advised that in order to meet the city's current standards, I may have to remove my home from the trailer it is welded to, then redefine it to a manufactured home, in addition to adding sprinklers to meet fire code. I've since been advised by engineers that this could negatively affect the structural integrity of my home while attempting to conform it to HUD standards. Unfortunately, my home is not a manufactured home and was not built to HUD standards. My home is, however, built to the American National Standards Institute code, which also meets the National Fire Protection Agency requirements under state law. As soon as I remove my wheels, it suddenly will not meet any standards. Because of this, there's continued uncertainty and confusion on how to define my home and how to make it a permanent structure, including whether I need to remove the wheels or axles or my entire home from the trailer completely. I can instead skirt my wheels, hook up to city utilities and easily establish that desired sense of permanence if West Sacramento adopts movable tiny home policy. I've been living safely in my home for over five years, but I'm concerned that by attempting to meet your current standards, it may leave me homeless by the end, and I cannot afford to build a completely new home. Please direct staff to work on implementation of movable tiny home policy. Examples have been provided in the public comment for reference. We also have advocates and other policymakers on standby, ready to help the city navigate and implement tiny home policy. I chose West Sacramento for a reason, and I continue to choose West Sacramento because I see its potential and vision that tiny homes can contribute to in a positive way. Please let my tiny home be the vessel to show this entire region what is possible.
Maria Grijalva.
Madam Mayor, good evening, council members, staff, and most importantly, tonight, to the residents of West Sacramento. For the record, I am Maria Grijalva, District Two Neighborhood Advocate Representative. I've been representing my area for quite some time advocating, and as many of you know, I am the one that brought district elections to West Sacramento, and thanks to many of you, thanks to me, many of you are sitting up there. I wanted to share some sad news. I'm on my way to a funeral tomorrow. A former West Sacramento resident, Toni Marie Peña, has passed away at the young age of 46. Toni Marie was my niece. She used to live on Franklin and Glide. She lost her battle to addiction in Austin, Texas, December the 3rd, where she had returned to start a new life, but she didn't make it. Her children, former West Field Elementary students, now 13 and 11, have lost their mother. My sister is inconsolable, as you can imagine. I'd like to say, rest in peace, Toni Marie Peña, and I love you. You know, we didn't think it was an occasion to start a fundraiser for $50,000 because there was a tragedy. In fact, death is a part of life, and I actually welcome it when it's my turn because I know I did my time on this earth. But at our last city council meeting, we were all, we all witnessed another type of death here. Many in the community also called me, like they've called Rhonda, fearing that our progressive leadership had died and that suddenly Mayor, former Mayor Christopher Cabaldon was gonna be back in the picture. It was very, very distressing for a lot of us, especially for all the people that voted him out. They voted him out for a reason, and a lot of people don't know that the current former mayor sits on the commission, the Port Commission. And so that's really important because the city needs to be, the community needs to be informed. Anyway, so I was gonna come over here and say, over my dead body, will a street be named after the man that had me arrested? Because I need to remind the public that it was Christopher Cabaldon's FPPC complaint that actually had me falsely arrested, and we need to have that publicly known. It's really important. And so, and so with that, I wanted to tell the public that as a community and with the help of folks like Rhonda, we can come together and continue to have a progressive city. I really believe that as women, as mothers, we will do that. We won't fake like we're being activists, but actually be activists. And so with that, I really congratulate you on your new, on your position, because I really believe that as women, we get stuff done. Thank you so much.
Marilyn Williams.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I am Marilyn Williams. This is my husband Walter, and we live in, can you hear me? We live in Marshall Paulson, and I have contacted this city Mayor Guerrero and other members of the staff about the problem with trucks on Marshall Road. I've been talking to people on Next Door about the problems we're having with traffic, and they said to me, what do you expect the council to do? And my answer to them was, it's not my position to know what they're gonna do. It's my position to take it to you all and ask you what you're gonna do about it. I know that those trucks don't belong there, and it's not because, I'm not here because I don't think they look pretty or I don't like seeing them out the window. It's because they're dangerous. And I recently retired, and I cannot rest in my bedroom because trucks between the hours of 5:00 to 8:00 or 9:00 AM, they are driving down that street. They're trying to go around that little roundabout. I even saw one back up on the roundabout, and they don't care. They know that they should not be there. And I know that I've talked to you all, I've sent you clips, I've sent you all so many different emails to so many different people, that I don't understand why something is not being done, and what is it gonna take to get something done? We live there. We sleep there. Some of the people on my, on the backside where I live have small kids that probably sleep in some of those bedrooms, that one of those trucks will eventually hit. And it's just unsafe, and there are no police there. The residents drive through that roundabout as if they're on a, I don't know where they went, where they're going. They're so fast. We can't get out on the Seymour side. We have to wait. And if it's, if it's not gonna be a four-way stop, it should not be a two-way stop with traffic going east and west the way it wants to go. So I challenge you all to do something about this. We can't live like that, and maybe we shouldn't have bought this home on this street, but the city should not have built them there if they were not gonna let us live comfortably and safely and feel like we don't have to move. We moved here eight years ago, and I feel like we made a mistake. We have a beautiful home, we have a beautiful neighborhood, but the city has a problem here. I don't know where the police officers are, I don't know why they're not conducting traffic, but if I drove fast, I bet I'd get a ticket. Those truck drivers do not. You wanna add anything?
So with that said, congratulations. As you said earlier, the women get things done. Congratulations to you all for being there. Six seconds left. We're behind you. We want to make sure that we do that, we can, what we can do to support it, but we do need to do something about the traffic on Marshall.
Guy Stevenson.
First, I'd like to say, welcome. Second thing is, you really did a lot of progress in Sacramento. Your P bids and everything that you've done in Sacramento, because you did, you did that South Area District, correct? Anyway, you did a wonderful job. I did a little background on your, what you did in the South Area, and I'm impressed. But the reason I'm here is every two weeks, I'm here for the same thing. And I agree with these people. This little area right out here, all the way down to Enterprise and Lake has become an Indy 500 racetrack. I'm not gonna badmouth the police because I support them, but what I am gonna tell you is there's not enough enforcement. These people, when you park in the bike lane, it's an automatic ticket. If you're on the other side of the bridge, they're gonna for sure ticket you. They park these semis parks, they unload these tractors, they unload these dump trucks, and then bikes have to go around it, and what's gonna happen is you're gonna have somebody get killed. And actually, somebody just got hit a couple of weeks ago, just beyond Harbor, and that person isn't expected to live because they got hit from the rear and they were in the bike lane, avoiding a truck. So the enforcement needs to be picked up. It really, really does. You know what I mean? I'm not bad, like I said, I'm not badmouthing the deputy chief or the chief. They do an outstanding job, but they have to do more enforcement on this road out here, all the way to Lake. I've seen four accidents right down by my office, where Lake and Enterprise is. I've seen cars run red lights, they're down there drifting, which is a big problem in that area, in that industrial area, plus that whole road right there from Lake and Enterprise all the way down to Harbor is turning into nothing but a racetrack. And, and nobody's doing anything about it. There's not enough enforcement, there needs to be more enforcement before somebody else gets hurt or they get killed. And if it's not in your agenda to do anything about it, fine, then it will go to another step. You know what I mean? Well, litigation, you know, that's the only thing we can do. You know, public safety is very, very important. Walmart's turning around right now, and they're ready to close that store down. They lost $3.6 million in one year, right out of this Walmart. $2 million out of Target. They ain't doing anything to these people. Why? If you want your town to shrink and you want these businesses to say, we've had enough, zero enough, then fine, but that's not what I'm about. I'm about law and order, I'm old school. If you break the law, you need to go to jail, period. All this thing about, oh, we'll just pacify you and give you counseling? No. Some people don't listen to counseling. Thank you. Have a great night.
Terry Riegen.
I can't agree more than what this young lady here said. We've got a problem in West Sac, and it's getting ignored. If it has to do with the funding of police, I would request, give them more. The reason is, is that we're not seeing it in the newer section of West Sacramento. With all the businesses, the warehouses that have sprouted up, that brings in revenue to the city, if I'm not mistaken. And what are we getting from it? The road, just talking about Southport, the slow lane from, let's just say McDonald's there, going to the west, there's a big hole there and they just went ahead and went over it. You can't go ahead and tar over the road and throw some gravel down and say, woo, working for another year. The hydraulics of the trucks driving on the road forces the water into the cracks, and that's where the asphalt comes up. We got a big problem with that. That's, that's just one area. Guess what? If you want, I'll go around and take pictures of every pothole, but it's gonna be a big stack. The warehouses bring in a lot of people, a lot of workers, a lot of trucks that are visiting that don't know the area, the trucks that go the wrong route, which has been described. They're watching their GPS, and their GPS says, sure, there's a road, take it. So I don't know how you fix that. But the people that seem to be working at a lot of the warehouses, I don't need to mention any names, they get off a shift and they're just ready to go for it. Young people wanting to squeal their tires. We had one the other day, a young lady in some kind of a red car over Southport Storage. She came drifting around, you could see her marks on the road, and she ended up into an electrical box and into the bushes and wrecked her car. So this is happening all over. We hear it every night. We hear the noise going on, and by the time that we say, okay, I guess I'll call the police, and by the time that they respond, guess who's not there? Unless they set up a sting, which I think has happened a couple- Unless they set up a sting, which I think has happened a couple of times. But, the traffic's getting bad, the tempers are getting bad, and we need some relief out there. We need some help with the roads, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
There are no more public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will go on next to our consent agenda item. We have items two through 11. I'll ask if there are any council members who would like to have an item pulled, and if not, I'll ask if there are any, for open it up to public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak.
All right, close the public comment, bring it back to council. I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All right, council member Early moved. Council member Akala second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Early.
Aye.
Council member Akala.
Aye.
Council member Sopio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you so much. Next, we will move to, we have no public hearings or general agenda items. We will move to General Administration Function Part Two. And I will start off with what we do every, after every election, is our, appoint our council assignments. And so, for the City Selection Committee, I'll mention the last name of the council member. It'll be Guerrero, two by two. Guerrero and Orozco, sorry, that's the county, city-county two by two. City School, two by two. Guerrero and Sopio Hall. For the Executive Commission to address homelessness, Sopio Hall and Orozco is the alternate. For the League of California Cities, it will, it'll, it's the voting delegate, and it will be, um, Alcala and Sopio Hall as the alternate. For the Local Agency Formation Commission of Yolo County, Alcala. For the New Hope Community Development Commission, also known as the Yolo County Housing Authority, Early and Sopio Hall as the alternate. Port Commission, I will be making just three appointments tonight. Guerrero, Early, Sopio Hall. Remote Access Network Board, Guerrero. River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority, Guerrero and Orozco. Sacramento Area Council of Government, Guerrero and Early as the alternate. And these includes all of the committee, including Transportation Committee assignments. And for the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, Orozco and Sopio Hall as the alternate. For the Water Resources Agency, Sopio Hall. For the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, Alcala and Orozco as the alternate. For the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, there'll be an appointment for the Reclamation District 900. And then for the Yolo County Transportation District, Early and Sopio Hall as the alternate. For the Yolo Habit Conservancy, Sopio Hall and Early as the alternate. For the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, Alcala. And for the Yolo Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency, Sopio Hall. And I'll accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, and Madam Clerk, council member Early moved, council member Sopio Hall second. Please call the roll.
Council member Early.
Aye.
Council member Akala.
Aye.
Council member Sopio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. I would also like to ask if there are any communications from our council assignments. Okay. And there, and next item is our council appointments. We do, we don't have any tonight, and we have, next is our council calendar.
Good evening. Just a reminder that City Hall will be closed to the public from December 6, 20, December 26 through January 2nd. That's our annual holiday closure time, so, other than that, that's it for me.
Thank you. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items tonight. First, speaking of the city advisory commissions, we did have the deadline for applicants for those commissions on December 2nd. We didn't, we got a decent number of applications, but not enough to, by staff's estimate, to give the council sufficient choices and to, actually to fill all the commissions. So, what we're recommending, and I've talked to some of you offline, we also know that there's a real strong desire to make sure that the city's represented across, across all areas of the city. So, we want to make sure that we give you all an opportunity to help us with that, to go ahead and get applicants in the door here, so we can give you those choices. And so, we're recommending to extend that deadline, well, we're actually, we are extending the deadline, doesn't need council action, to the 22nd, December 22nd. So, we'll follow up and get you all some materials that you can use to help promote it. We'll do another round of advertising on all of our platforms as well, but we really encourage people from all over the city to apply, and as council members, hopefully you can help us with that and then make recommendations once the time comes to the mayor for those appointments. The second item is, I would like to announce tonight, I think, as you know, we have a vacancy in our Economic Development and Housing Department for the director position. Little, little different road how we got there, but long story short, I want to announce that I'm very happy that Tracy Michael will be actually moving over to the Economic Development and Housing Department. It's not going to be for a little while, I'll explain that, but obviously Tracy is a great director already in Parks and Recreation. She's going to be in that role until at least the end of the year. You'll recall, and this is really for our newest council member, we have a program called our Assistant City Managers and Residents Program, where we actually rotate a department head in to our office for a 10-week period at a time. Multiple reasons, but mainly to give them some exposure to the city management field, but also to help our office. Tracy's actually next in line for that, so she's going to be doing that from January 1st to March 10th. That's the 10 weeks. During that time, sorry if I'm, this is confusing at all, but Diane Richards has been serving as the director, the interim director of Economic Development and Housing. She's going to continue in that role through March 10th and work with Tracy on the transition, at which point Tracy will step in as the permanent director in EDH. Also, in that first quarter of next year, we anticipate running a recruitment for Tracy's replacement as the Parks and Recreation Director. So, if you have any questions about any of that, what I just described, feel free to follow up with me, but I am more confident than ever in our exec team. Tracy's background actually was back, way back in the day when we had redevelopment agency, we all worked together in redevelopment, and Tracy was a star in that department back then. I know she's looking forward to getting back to kind of her roots in local government and a great team in that department. She's leaving Parks and Recreation in great shape, and we'll have a good interim situation there as well, with some of the staff that are already on, on, on projects there. So, that's my update, and like I said, if you have any questions, you can follow up me. Thank you.
Erin, I do have a quick question, just so the public understands. How do they actually apply? I mean, do they go onto our website? How can they apply for these commissions? If you could explain that just a little more thoroughly, because I was told that they looked, some folks wanted, wanted to apply, but they couldn't find.
Okay. Do you, do you want to just go ahead and explain? Amanda, I'll go over that.
Sure, yeah, so the, the application is available on the website. I believe there's a, and Lori can confirm this, that there's a, a version where you can, it's a fillable form, but there's also an option that you can print a form, and you can turn in a paper form if you're unable to fill it out online. You can also come to City Hall and request a paper copy from the clerk's office. So, we will get some more information out on social media this week about the extension of the deadline and with information on, on how people can apply, and we'll also provide that to, to the council, so that they can forward that to whoever.
And if it would be helpful, I mean, we're happy to print paper copies of applications to provide to you. We can, we can do that and make, give them to each council member, if that would be helpful. You know, you know, obviously not everyone is able to do it online. So, anything that will help you, help us, we want to do, because these are really important commissions, and like I said, it's very important to have representation from across the city.
Erin, that would be great, and also, we could have maybe a few at the front desk, so we can tell people if they're interested, you know, we can't get to them. You can pick it up at the front desk.
Yeah, we do have that. Actually, I think you mean the security desk. We can, if we don't do that already, we can probably add that. I think it may be upstairs, but we can make it easier, for sure, if we're not already doing that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Erin, do you, do you know how many applications would be a good amount? I have no idea how many we got. It sounds like it wasn't enough, but what is, what is enough?
I think, I'll just generally answer that. We would like to give the council plenty of choice in terms of, you know, because a lot of people, when they apply, they all apply for the same commission.
Yeah.
We ask them to give options. Historically, I don't know what our typical volume has been, but there are a lot of people that don't get on commissions, so it's, it's sort of, that's, if that's helpful at all, there, there are probably dozens of people in years I can remember that apply, and it's just, you know.
They're not selected.
Right, right. So, I, my understanding is, the number of applicants we got for this round, even if we appointed everyone, we might not be able to fill all the commission seats. So, so we're, we're short.
And, and all of the commissions are open, right? Right, Mayor, just to make sure I understand?
Yes.
So, when I go out and encourage folks across the city, but, but even specifically from my district, they can, they can look at any that they might be interested in and apply? Okay.
Yes, and the distinction is, so it's all the advisory commissions. The most popular ones are always probably Planning Commission and Parks Commission. What it doesn't include are all the, all the appointments to outside boards of commissions that you all just addressed.
Okay.
So, for example, Port Commission or any of the other items on there. So, we're only talking about the advisory commissions to the city council.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. City Attorney Report. All right, staff direction from city council members? Know if you drew agenda item request by council, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I would second. All right, thank you, council member Akala moved, and council member Sopio Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Early. Council member Early. Early, yeah.
I did. It's okay. It's been late. It did, but it's okay. Yeah, but it was early.
Council member Early moved, council member Sopio Hall seconded.
Thank you. Thank you for the call. Council member Early.
Aye.
Council member Akala.
Aye.
Council member Sopio Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone, also.